Good evening. Welcome to the August 9, 2021, 7:00 PM Board of Selectmen's meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Henry Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the beautiful, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now open up, open forum, I know our town clerk can't wait to get up in front of us tonight.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Sue.
Just a friendly reminder that September 1, late fees will go on for the dogs. As of now, we have about 1,600 registered of 2,400. So we've got about 800 left to go. We'll be sending our reminder letters out this week. So if you do license and it crosses in the mail, just give us a call to make sure the dog is in good standing, and we should be good to go. And then also this week, we should be getting our actual numbers for the 2020 census, for the federal census. From what I have been told with the preliminary numbers, we're going to have to do a little redistricting, just within East Bridgewater. I haven't heard anything that any of our perimeters are changing, you know, with the Brockton, like Precinct 1 is still part of Brockton. But we're going to have to shift a few, like, streets, maybe just two precincts will be involved. We'll be working with the state and, you know, the Census Bureau on that to get it all figured out. And when it's completed, obviously, the selectman will have to sign off on it to make sure you approve the guy, you know, what we've all come up with. And so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have the numbers, and then it's a process. We'll go on from there.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, a question, please, Sue. Through you, Mr. Chairman, Sue. I've read, not recently, but there's a, there may be a conflict or one brewing between municipalities in the state because they have to redraw congressional district lines, too, with the redistricting, and they don't want to be working at odds with one another. What do you know about that, and what can you tell us?
I haven't heard anything that East Bridgewater is going to be affected by that at this point, but I think everyone's waiting to get the final numbers to, before they can say who's got to go where.
So you're nowhere near a split, if I may. So you're nowhere near a split. You don't divide yourself between congressional districts or anything like that?
Well, I mean, the town, like, we, our Precinct 1, we're also, we're in a district with Brockton and West Bridgewater.
Yeah.
And then 2, 3, and 4 are in a different section, and Precinct 4 is also in a different, off on its own on one of the splits.
But the congressional district boundary lines are, are they near East Bridgewater at all?
I don't believe they're close to us. I think we might be safe.
Yeah, that's where the beef may, may be with communities that have that kind of, potential conflict anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Adam Clerk, we can move on to our action items. The open forum is closed.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 19, 2021, 7:00 PM Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve, but not release, the minutes of the July 19, 2021, 7:48 PM Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve street lighting requirements for Victory Lane and Center National Grid. Locations of two 17-foot post-top pole top LED luminaries are shown on the approved subdivision plant. The billing for these lights shall be established in the name of the developer until the Town of East Bridgewater accepts the streets as a public way or until it is accepted by the Residential Development Association. Upon acceptance and by request to National Grid, the company will process the billing change.
Second.
Discussion. John, want to give us a little background on this?
This is the Victory Lane.
My planning board had one?
Yeah. I know we were up there looking at it about six months ago.
At least, yeah.
So to my knowledge, there's been a shift in the programming that National Grid uses as far as streetlights, particularly with our newest subdivisions, as such, they're more of the ornamental-style light pole rather than what we would all think of as a typical streetlight on a utility pole. Because now a majority of our new, some newer subdivisions have underground utilities. So the ornamental streetlights were a point of discussion amongst the planning board and applicants as to who would take, who had ownership and responsibility of not only installing them, but maintaining them through the process and this and that. So working with the planning board, the town has adopted a particular style that will be acceptable to National Grid provides three options. The town has selected, I think, two of those options, as options that the applicant can design into their plan. National Grid will rent them, or lease, to the applicant while the subdivision is being constructed, and then after that point, it'll be turned over to the town, just as all of our regular utility streetlights. Again, they're all, they'll be LED ornamental lights, very low, draw, but will be the responsibility of National Grid to maintain. So I think, particularly now with the rental agreements and by utilizing the LED technology, the cost of maintaining, operating streetlights is significantly lower. And again, that responsibility stays. Maintenance upgrades, things like that, still remain with National Grid, and they have the technology and capability to maintain those. So we'll just rent these units.
Do we know, has National Grid finished replacing all our lights with LED?
I believe we're about 98% complete.
Okay, great. Great. Fantastic. Good. Anything else? Sorry to put you on the spot. Not really.
I'm getting used to it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
I make a motion that we enter into contract signing with Town Assessor Paula Wolf.
Second.
Paula, join us. Say something like an assessor.
I took my oath today, so I promise to assess fairly and equitably across the board.
There you go. So how many contracts is this now?
Four, I believe. This will be the fourth one. 2012, I started, and then I was on the board since 2007, so getting up there.
Good. Good. Everything's running smooth down that office?
Very. Very. We have a good, good team, really good team, and our values are, we were certified last year, so that's a five-year breather somewhat, until it's five years now instead of three. That went pretty effortlessly, and we're doing good. There's a lot of good stuff happening, too, with new buildings and commercials and, you know, things that are in the horizon. So it's a little exciting to see that kind of stuff.
Good. Again, we want to thank you for being part of the financial team. You've been a huge asset to that. At the time, we really, really needed people to step in, and you did a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anything else?
No, I would have said what you said, that you really stepped up when we needed help, getting ready for town meeting, getting the budget done, and we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Paula's been a big asset, and we speak quite a bit and talk about quite a bit of different information from the town, so she's, I'm happy to see that we got another contract, and we look forward to working with you for sure.
Yeah, I'm glad to get it signed and move into our new projects that we have going on, so that's a good thing, and get this financial team right through the next year.
Reconstitute. You're the holdover.
I know, I'm thinking about, you know, pulling my books out to start studying again.
Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks again, Paula.
Thank you.
I sign, and then just give them, yeah. This is always such a, oh, I, you can write what you see what you want.
Okay. You ready to move on, or do you want to wait?
I'll move on.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding the general teams, chauffeurs, warehousemen, and helpers of Brockton and vicinity, local union number 653, the union, and the Town of East Bridgewater Department of Public Works.
Second.
Any discussion? John?
Yeah.
I know you're happy you came tonight.
He's management, he's going to talk about.
He can talk about the contract. He was involved.
For the last several years, I think we've been before the board here talking about this particular agreement is directly related to the expansion of our municipal wastewater services here in East Bridgewater. And we've been discussing, both at the board and with Finance Committee, and the, bringing the services in-house in the benefit of having our own team and developing our own team to operate and manage the wastewater treatment plant we currently operate, but also there's a, you know, as we've all discussed, there's extensive growth opportunity. And what this, working with the teams, is we've been able to identify the benefit that we feel it will have, both to the town as a whole, as well as DPW and the teams, bargaining unit, to have this capability within the umbrella of Public Works and allow us to actually see that growth, have people in place as the system grows, rather than we suddenly get to a point where we recognize we really should have had some people here. Well, the intent is that we will have people in place that, you know, kind of learn from the ground up, per se, as we have limited flow at this point for our total capacity. But the opportunity is approaching very quickly where the operations of the wastewater treatment plant are going to grow significantly. To that point, we actually had an application today come forward from one of the larger potential users on the Route 18 corridor for, to tie in the carriage crossing complex.
Right.
Has approached the town and is interested now in tying in to the system.
Excellent.
And that's going to be a significant benefit to both the operations of the system, but also we'll begin to actually see some financial recovery of the investment we made, plus future growth. So it's all kind of, all kind of coming together at a perfect time to develop this position. And again, I want to thank the teams for working with us and agreeing to move forward with this position. I think we all see the opportunity here from all perspectives.
That's great. We've talked about that for years, and now the foresight, and finally getting it going, as Peter's running slowly. Everything doesn't move that quickly, but to see this, it's a fantastic move forward. So, thank you. Questions?
No.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're released for now, John.
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of East Bridgewater and the Professional Firefighters Association.
Second.
Matt Foster just wants to get in front of the camera and say a few words.
You want me to call John up, too?
You're on your own.
Hello.
Hello.
So you have, you have a new contract.
That's what I've been told, yes.
And everything's working great, and it's a one-year deal this time.
Yes.
So probably in the fall, we'll probably have to start negotiating for the next contract.
Falls in a month.
It seems to take a, seems to take a little while to get going.
He knew that when he started.
I'm honored to be able to represent a really good group of firefighters and EMTs and paramedics, and I've been instructed to say thank you very much.
No, we appreciate that. Jim, you wanted to just talk about the negotiations a little bit?
Only, Mr. Chairman, the board members had several occasions to discuss, saying, in exec sessions, about half the time, you know, simple updates, you know, as to where the process stands. This does give in this transition period, a one-year extension of the existing fire contract. So, you know, the term is extended one year, there's the standard 2% clause. We have addressed a stipend issue, recognizing that this kind of first respond to work is a little more complex these days than it had been before. And in recognition of that, management also got a little more flexibility, I guess, in shift assignments and shift durations and other matters like that. You know, the talks between the chief and union representatives were, you know, were always fairly productive. It's just getting it through the bureaucratic system, you know, to serve it up like this tonight that was, you know, a little cumbersome at times. Not the fault of the negotiators, but we're here.
I appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you. I thank the membership.
I will.
Anything else?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Treasurer/Collector Melissa Morrissey.
Second.
Discussion. Again, would like to thank Melissa for her time here. She has accepted a job at another town, and she will be with us until the beginning of September. But she has done a great job while she's here, and we wish her the best.
Agreed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the following board committee member resignation. Melanie Dean from the Finance Committee, Sheila Glidden as an associate member to the Planning Board.
Second.
Discussion. I think a lot of people know Melanie Dean is now coming on board as our town accountant, effective in the first week in September, so she cannot serve on the Finance Committee, but she has done a tremendous job while she was there. Sheila Glidden has been an associate member to the Planning Board for the last year or so, and again, thank her for her service there. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the event permit application from the Commercial Club of East Bridgewater, located at 1 Nielsen Avenue for a fundraiser, "Throws for K-9 Thor" on August 28, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion. Because everyone knows Thor is our new K-9. He's still going through his academy training and leading the class, from what I understand, but that might be biased on the chief, police chief. It sounds like it's going to be a great day to throws for K-9 is Con-Hole, and they are putting teams together. If the rest of the select board would like to put a team together, they can let me know. Who wouldn't have to last long?
[laughing]
Probably wouldn't. So everyone, put that, August 28 from 11 to 5. Should be a great day. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the application for a one-day liquor license from the Commercial Club of East Bridgewater, located at 1 Nielsen Avenue for a fundraiser, "Throws for K-9 Thor" on August 28, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Second.
Again, this is just an extension so they can serve liquor while they're trying to find the hole in the Con-Hole. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the event permit application from the Commercial Club of East Bridgewater, located at 1 Nielsen Avenue for annual chat rob motorcycle run on September 11, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the event permit application from the East Bridgewater Recreation Commission, located at the high school, baseball field, and town hall parking lot for a family fun day summer event, Summer Fest, on August 21, 2021, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Rain date is August 22, 2021.
Second.
Discussion, Peter?
No, that'd be John Haynes again. So I was unable to attend, I was away last week, and he stepped in for me to attend the meeting with the tent staging company, so I asked him to.
So Public Works has been assisting the Recreation Commission with the logistics and the operation of how the event will be staged. We had an opportunity last Friday to meet with the tent contractor, laid out locations for the proposed tent, stage, and another auxiliary tent, accessory tent, which will be, my understanding is the secondary tenor, well, actually, and how we're kind of envisioning this as the flow of, no, flow of, the word escapes me, but the people attending, attendees?
Patrons.
Enter patrons, I like that. They'll enter through the tent that is set up for the other civic organizations like, that are participating, like the Arts Council and the Historical Commission and things like that, that are going to be attended. So they'll kind of walk through there, they'll exit that tent into the field area. The performance tent will be set up off of second, you know, 25 feet or so into the outfield, lined up off of second base, and that will leave a general area to congregate and sit with lawn chairs and blankets and things. And then you'll have the opportunity from there to access the upper town hall parking lot from the Libby food trucks, and we have, we'll have some picnic tables and things like that set up in the parking lot. But that'll be closed to traffic, as well as, my understanding, will actually, the police department will be closing the portion of Plymouth Street that we typically do for events. So that'll actually allow for some expansion of, you know, things like that. There'll be, kind of, the intent behind the event is really more regathering, less formal. There'll be, formal seems to be a theme. There'll be some lawn games, things like that, but, you know, kind of unstructured, a little bit more like a traditional picnic afternoon, where people bring their own things and that, and be able to put two local food trucks and a ice cream.
And then, I guess, shaved ice or something.
Some vendors, so. Could be a nice afternoon.
Yeah. I did speak to Paul, taking from what John said, did talk to Paul Bryant today, and I want to thank the police station and the police force for, they're going to donate a few officers a day as well. So Paul himself, he said he'd be there, and he's got two others that'll donate some time just to make sure that the day is safe.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Nope.
One last piece of this is, the Recreation Commission just needs to contact the deputy fire chief regarding the tents and any other permits that they may need. That's the only last piece that they need for this.
Yep.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the application for one-day liquor license from Ritter Farm, Inc., located at 390 Oak Street for a golf tournament on September 11, 2021, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the request from Delphina Rogers of the American Legion Post 91 for use of the town common for Memorial Day observance on Monday, May 30, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We should get in the jump on the beach.
Worried that, like, somebody else is going to use the.
We had a little bit of communication last year, so she wanted to make sure she had it in as early as possible.
Love you, DeeDee.
All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the request from Delphina Rogers of the American Legion Post 91 for use of the town common for flag ceremony to burn old and no longer usable U.S. flags on Sunday, June 12, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, rain date, June 19, 2022.
Second.
Discussion.
Burn flags in the rain.
We don't have 2023 yet. What's the matter with her? She's behind the ball. All those in favor?
Yeah, I mean, she could just make this an annual event.
Aye.
Since it is every year.
Aye, aye, aye. I make a motion to approve the request from.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Michael Bankson of Massasoia STEM Program for the use of Satcham Rock Farm for a native bee research and picnic on August 29, 2021, from 2:00 PM to dusk.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have one additional action item. I make a motion to approve the request from Paul Laporte of Angels in America for the use of the town common to display gold ribbons. The ribbons will be placed around the town common the last week of August and will be displayed the entire month of September in honor of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a great cause that's been here for the last few years, and it's something to notice when you drive by.
And that is it for action items tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Town Administrator Report, Mr. Matt Fussell.
Chairman, I, at your request, I promised earlier today that I wouldn't have one for tonight. So I don't.
You're not supposed to tell the people that he.
Oh, why not? Are we not communicative on a regular basis?
You are.
Some people would say too regular, but whatever. Announcement, Rebecca. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Just a couple upcoming events. The Harvest Festival, August 21, at Satcham Rock Farm, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This event allows the public to walk through the gardens and share harvest of organic food. And Summer Fest, that the board just approved, August 21, 2021, at the high school baseball field and town hall, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. There'll be live music, food trucks, face painting, games, and local vendors. The event is free to the public. You only have to bring blankets and lawn chairs. The rain date is August 22, 2021.
I expect the board to be first in line for face painting.
Spider-Man face, maybe, David?
Yep.
The last thing is that we have, the town has a lot of openings on their boards and committees. Strictly volunteer, but right now there are two open positions on the Agricultural Commission alternate, four on the Arts Council, two on the Capital Planning Committee, two Conservation Commission, one Conservation Commission alternate, one Council on Aging, one Council on Aging Associate. EB Cam does have an opening, but we're waiting to hear back from EB Cam whether or not they're going to be appointing a member. Two on the Finance Committee, one Historical Commission alternate, four on the Patriotic Activities Committee, two Recreation Commission alternates.
Oh, that's a lot.
So we do have a lot of openings. If anybody is interested in applying, you can go onto the website, onto the Selectmen's Office, and you'll find the application, and just submit it to me, rjohnson@eastbridgewaterma.gov. So I think we'll give it a couple weeks, and we do have some applications in from some of the committees.
Okay. Yeah, we'll look at it.
But maybe a couple more weeks.
Yeah, we'll look at, maybe the first time meeting in September.
There's a lot of joy to be had serving on town committees. It's good to be a volunteer.
Community.
And I'm not being sarcastic or facetious. I know.
See, no one's going to understand you there.
I think it's true.
It is true.
It's a good thing to do for your community, and some of those are more, FinCom is a lot more meetings than others, but you know what?
It's a certain time of year that it gets busier.
It's, it's a good thing to do. Get involved. Run for office. Be on it. Okay, I'm done.
Says the lady to discover your life.
I know. Join me in my misery of the.
Nice.
Of public service, right?
Right, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Under upcoming meetings, just, two things, if I may. On the agenda, it's posted, not posted, but listed, possible meeting dates of September 13 and September 27. That schedule may change depending on the progress of the town administrator search. I did speak to the search, I think, last week, to see if we couldn't have an in-person report, an announcement of the finalists on Monday, September, I'm sorry, August 30. If that's not possible, then it's not.
I'll be following up with them on the tool, and I'm sure we will have a meeting before the 13th.
It's kind of a sweet spot in everyone's schedule. I hear, I've been polling, I've been polling a lot of people. Also, I've been polling folks, including members of the Board of Selectmen, the moderator, the town clerk on a couple of occasions about a fall special time meeting date. Because there's, there's sure to be at least one major zoning initiative on the matter. We're looking at a late November date, November 22. As the. I'm not asking for official recognition of that just yet, but probably the next meeting I will. So September 30, and hopefully.
August 30.
August 30, thank you. A special meeting in the board, the first or second week in September to actually conduct TA interviews in November, the 22nd.
And when we do the town administrator interviews, they will be in open session.
Yep.
We will ask all the department heads and anyone else that wants to be here to watch it. And I think, but the board, my thoughts anyhow, was we will take some time after the interviews are over, and we'll be talking to the department heads and people in the town that are involved so we can have all their. town that are involved so we can have all their input before we make a, this very, very important decision. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy the rest of your summer, folks.